Okay, I'm gonna check in with the IT guys, make sure we're good, and I got the thumbs up. So, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. And I believe Dr. Lenart is scheduled to do the invocation, but we'll start with the roll call first.
Councilman Jindal?
Present.
Councilman Lenart?
Here.
Mayor Potem Daily?
Here.
Mayor Duper?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And the council did meet beginning at about six o'clock tonight, a scheduled workshop in the community room on one of our agenda items. So, we are already, technically already in session, I guess. So, we'll move on to the invocation of Pledge of Allegi- no. Oh, yes, we did have a closed session.
Yes, we did have a closed session this evening to consider initiation of litigation, and there was discussion and direction was given to staff. Otherwise, we have nothing else to report on that this evening.
And that was separate from our workshop?
Yes.
Okay, on to the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Lenart?
Father in heaven, we thank you once again for your watch care over us and your love for us. We pray your presence and your blessing upon this meeting that we might come to the proper and best decisions for our beautiful city here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, do we have any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
At this point, we will open up the public comment portion of our meeting, and I have one comment card from Stan Sewell. But I, yeah, I'm assuming you want to talk about the CDBG stuff, so, okay. So, we'll hold that until we get to that item, but is there anybody in the public who wants to speak on something that's non-agendized? You're welcome to step up now. Seeing, again, nobody running to the front. We will move on with conflicts of interest, and we have no disclosures at this point. And item number one. Item number one is a presentation on the both very happy and very sad occasion for us on the retirement of our city clerk Barbara Nicholson. And Barbara, if you would come on down so we could put the spotlight on you and make you uncomfortable.
Thank you.
This is exciting because we were talking, you know, we never see the chair, and we've got the chair this time. So, we'll get to that in a second. So, Barbara started with the city on December 8, 1986, and she came in as a clerk. She was promoted in 1989, promoted again in 1990, again in 1999, and then to her final promotion in 2017 to become the city clerk. And over the last several years, Barbara has really taken care of us, especially me. And I just want to thank you so much for all the stuff that you have done for us that has been just above and beyond what anybody is expected to do. Barbara officially retired on December 16, 2001. With, how many years is that?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five years. So, for those of you watching out there on TV land, we have kind of a tradition here at the city that if you make it to 20, you get a lamp, but if you make it to 30, you get the rocking chair. We gotta make sure that that ends up on the camera, too, so whoever's watching at home, they gotta see that there is an official rocking chair, and that's pretty cool. And it's got the city's seal on the back of it. And anyway, so, I want to thank you very much, and there may be some other comments from the rest of the council if they want to jump in.
I'm sure, I know, there are times when some of the councilmen have tested your patience with meeting deadlines and coming in to fill out papers and sign papers. But you've always been pleasant and joyful about it. Maybe I was the only one, I don't know. You've been competent and always very friendly, and I appreciate your friendship and the work that you've done.
Thank you.
I appreciate everything. It's been a very much a pleasure to work with you, and I hope you enjoy your retirement. Will you be reminding me to fill out my ethics thing? I don't know if I can do it without your help.
No, I've talked to Lenart already.
Yeah, being the newest council member here, it can be allotted sometimes, but you made it so easy coming in, and I really, really appreciate that, right? I feel like you're the one person I could go to if I had any issues at all. So, thank you for being there for me, I really appreciate it, and I hope you get to enjoy your golden years in your retirement.
Thank you. I do thank all of you. It was just a pleasure working for the city and with the city council and councils before. I've always had some dealings with them even before the city clerk position, clear back to when Milford was on our council and mayor because I've always worked with Pam, and it's just been, and working with Jarv and everybody here, it made it an easy 35 years. And I thank them all very much and highly recommend retirement.
Well, there's one more thing. We got a certificate of recognition from the California State Senate and State Senator Rosalia Ochoa Bowe, who is our state senator for the 23rd district as it stands right now. And she wanted to say, "In recognition of your 35 years of public service and commitment to your community, your dedication to professionalism, transparency, and ensuring the residents of Loma Linda have access to the city's historical, legal, and official records is to be commended." Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we need to do anything official? Do you need to sit in the chair? Like, how does that, how does this work? I don't know, I've only heard rumors of these things. Oh, awesome.
Yeah, I have my son Patrick with me.
Could we get maybe a picture with everybody?
Sure.
All right, should we, should we come down? Come on, we gotta come down.
There's the center. Put it right in.
You go in the center, cover this one, because that's not, we're trying to get you a line.
Oh, okay.
Another one? Another one? We try one more with the-
Get one in there, too?
One more. Thank you. No, jump.
You know, we probably should have, we probably should have asked Barbara where the rocking chair tradition came from, because she may know, I don't know.
I honestly don't know, but because initially it had been just for retiring city council members. And I know Pam had indicated that she wanted one when she retired, and we would have if she'd allowed us the opportunity, but things, yeah, things took a turn for the worse there. And I just mentioned that, oh, yeah, rocking chair would be nice, and there it was. Ask and-
So, what's fascinating real quick, because you gotta do the math here, right? The city's been around for 50 years, so the first person to get the rocking chair could have only happened 20 years ago. And so, there have to be more than just-
There are, but they ended up with a lamp, not a rocking chair. I just made the comment that, oh, hey, I'd like a rocking chair, and you just gotta know the right people.
I guess. Anyway, well- Who?
I did not. Lydia ordered it. I did not. Lydia did that.
All right, we need a picture of you in it, though, at your retirement home.
Pardon?
We need a picture of you in the rocking chair.
Oh, okay.
That didn't come outright. I didn't mean retirement home, I meant like, you know, in retirement. I'm just gonna stop. All right, congratulations.
You guys were in good hands with Lenart, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number two, which is a public hearing on our CDBG, which is a community block grant program. So, we'll go ahead and, yes?
Let me introduce it first, and then you can open the public here.
Okay, yes.
Okay, so every year, the city receives the funding from the county CDBG grant, and for next fiscal year, we will receive $150,000, of which 15% can be used for public services projects. And for next fiscal year, the staff recommend that we allocate $10,000 to the county library here in town. We allocate $10,000 to Inland Temporary Home, who has been working with the city, provide the housing for homeless women and children, and also $10,000 for Family Services Association. They provide the luncheon program for seniors. Right now, we, they provide lunch for seniors for a whole week, and they deliver here at the city hall every Wednesday, and city staff also delivered the meal to the senior at their houses. So, the remaining $120,000, the city will use that to replace the handicap ramps or access ramp at West Location. So, that's in my project, I mean, in my report.
Okay, we'll open the public comment. I know Stan wanted to speak, and I know you speak every year, so thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you for having me. I first want to express my gratitude to the council, the mayor, the council persons, the city staff, and the members of the community. They've been supporting us for at least 20 years through the CDBG program, and we're here to ask again. This last couple of years has been a change for all of us, and we'd like to take this opportunity also to reach out to the community. During this time, we've received funds, and we've upgraded our technology, our digital offerings. We've even put our new app so you can read your whole library on your phone. We encourage you to get that from your app store, it is free of charge. We would also like to ask, though, to have members of the community to help us out. There's been a number of people that have come asking for assistance, and then we've had to close down, we've reopened, closed down, et cetera. So, hopefully, we'll be reopening permanently, fingers crossed. And so, we would like to ask again, members of the community, to come and help us out, to volunteer. We supply the training, the materials, and we ask you to give one hour of your time each week and for a six-month commitment to help someone improve their English language skills. You don't need to speak another language. All you need to do is be able to have ability to communicate and a willingness to help. As I said, we've received a number of new databases, assistance, everything from cradle to career, job skills. We invite you to check it out, also to come to the library and check us out. We have reopened as of Monday and after being closed for about three weeks. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Real quick, I'd like to find out more on the app.
Yes, if you go to your app store and just look up San Bernardino County Library, you can download it for free, and it will allow you to check our catalog, order materials, check out our digital library, even check out books once you get there. You can check out our social media, and there's a whole lot more. Even put your library card on your phone so you'll always have it with you.
Yeah, really thank you for everything that you're doing. I was perusing this website, the county website for Loma Linda specifically. Some great services that are out there, resume services, so you can get paired with a one, with a professional to help you with their resume. One thing I found useful is that we have a free, basically, New York Times membership, right, for one day. So, a lot of digital offerings that I think people don't realize, and I'm really happy that you came here today. I didn't know that we had, or that you were seeking help for volunteers, so appreciate you coming out to make that.
Thank you. We are always seeking volunteers. Also, for people who are wishing to improve their language skills, please come on over, we will match you up. Also, we have computer classes that we can help people improve their computer literacy. And we not only have the New York Times, but we have a newspaper, news magazine database that you don't get all the pictures, but you get all the access to the text for free.
I think I understood you to say that we've been closed for the last three weeks, but I didn't hear why.
Due to the county public health office, they said since the rates were going up in protection of the community and the staff, we were open for door site services, so people could pick up their holds, they could ask us to pick up items for them.
So, it was a budget issue?
No, it's COVID.
No, COVID.
COVID, okay, I'm sorry.
Some crazy virus going around.
Yeah, I think I've heard about it. Okay, thank you.
What, some of the other things, so I, you know, we all come to the city hall regularly throughout the week to pick up paperwork and catch up on things we're doing, but I always see people in and out of the library, even when it seemed to be closed. Were there other things that were going on there, or what are some of the things you guys have been doing?
We had curbside services, so if you walked around the corner, we had a table there, you know, we had the signs, and people would call us and say, "Hey, I'm here to pick up my holds," or "I have some prints I'd like to get," and staff would, you know, transact over the table for them. So, we wish to be open rather than closed. We really enjoy having our clientele coming in. That's our whole purpose, is to have people coming in and use the library. So, it is there, and as I said, please come on and check us out.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak on this agenda item?
I have one more to report. Jeff Little from Inland Temporary Home just emailed me that he cannot make it tonight, they have a family emergency, so. But Inland Temporary Home have been our partner with the city for so many years. Again, it's very helpful to have their agency and the facility here in town.
Yeah, right on our city property.
Right, and the house on Heritage Park to help the homeless women and children. Also, with Tom from the Family Service Association, they have been working with us for at least, it's almost eight years now, to provide luncheon for seniors, so they've been very helpful also.
Thank you. Nobody else is running forward on that item, so we'll close the public hearing. And I guess we need a motion to approve it, correct?
In the past, before Lenart was appointed to city clerk, he was the one who does all the paperwork, but let me explain the process.
Well, initially, like, these other public service programs, they would submit the reimbursement directly to the county. Now, they submit the paperwork to the city, and we, in turn, reimburse these public programs, and then we submit our paperwork to the county. So, it's a little bit, it is a little bit of work, but the paperwork is pretty easy, because everything they give to us, I just forward, we would forward over to the county, and then we get reimbursed for it.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second with a question as well. $120,000 for access ramps and sidewalks annually, about how much do we need to do to take care of this?
The, these handicap ramps cost about $1,200. So, that can only do 10, and actually, less than 10 because to adjust the-
$12,000, $12,000, you mean?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, $12,000, I'm sorry. So, we have to adjust the sidewalks to accommodate the rent, so it's $120,000, you want 10?
Do you know how many we have in total?
I don't know.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, you have a first and a second. Madam Clerk?
The motion is to approve the proposed public service projects and construction improvement projects and fund allocations for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 CDBG programs as follows. The San Bernardino County Library, $10,000, Inland Temporary Homes, $10,000, Family Services Association, $10,000, and the city project to replace access ramps and sidewalk, city sidewalks, citywide, $120,000, for a total of $150,000 allocation. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Lenart?
Yeah.
Mayor Potem Daily?
Hi.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
The project was approved.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number four, and we did have a workshop related to some of this earlier tonight, and that is a public hearing on Council Bill R-2022-05, adopting a resolution to amend the general plan in regards to the housing element.
So, Lorena will present the item.
Tonight, we're gonna have Ms. Laura Stenson with MIG present the housing element item.
Thank you, Lorena, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll keep this relatively brief since we did have some discussion during the study session earlier this evening, and we did give you an overview of the housing element and a study session in October of last year. The presentation will touch on the overarching goals, why the city is adopting a housing element, to highlight some of the key programs moving forward for this year, and then to request the action to both certify the addendum to the environmental impact report, and then also to approve the housing element. The housing element is part of your general plan, your long-range plan. It's the only one that is, does require certification by a state agency. Although you'll hear a little bit this evening in the subsequent hearing about the safety element, and there are some rules that are similar in terms of having the state buy off on it. This housing element is or was due to the state in October of last year, but there is a grace period which will extend through the 11th of February, and so it's important to recognize that the hearing this evening is to get in just under that deadline if the council chooses to act tonight. The housing element has some very strict requirements in terms of how the city needs to look at its housing needs over the long term to see what you've done in the past, to decide what makes sense moving forward. So, you assess what you've done and decide what new needs to be done to address the housing needs in the community. The element also analyzes constraints to housing development. Are there either money constraints or time constraints that makes it more difficult for somebody who wants to build housing in Loma Linda to do so? The centerpiece of the housing element is a sites inventory, which is a map indicating where there is potential for new housing development over the next eight years. And then a new requirement this year is something called affirmatively furthering fair housing. That's a mouthful, AFFH, that focuses on actions the city will take to address maybe past instances of discrimination in housing. And this is something that every city and county is looking to do, is to analyze whether or not there have been laws in place or procedures in place that have made it difficult for people, for people of color and people of lower income to find housing in Loma Linda. The housing element does set forth a goal, and this goal for Loma Linda is 2,051 units. Every city in California is required to plan for its fair share of housing, and that is Loma Linda's fair share. This is a proportion of the state's fair share and a proportion of the 1.3 million units that are being planned for in the Southern California Association of Governments region. That's a six-county region of Southern California. Those units need to be distributed among different income categories, and this chart shows you that not all of the units are planned to be market rate units. In fact, roughly 40% are for the very low and low-income categories. And as the, actually, I guess I didn't have a note there at the bottom that says, "Those are relative to the county median income." So, a mixture of housing, recognizing that this corresponds to the, really, the needs of the population in the community and the region. In order to show that the city has enough properties that could be developed, we prepared a very detailed inventory. The first thing that we look to do, you know, you look at the easy things first. Are there projects that are in the pipeline or that have recently been approved that can credit towards that 2,051 units? And then, once we take those credits, we look at vacant sites, we look at sites that perhaps are not developed to their full potential and might redevelop over this eight-year period. And then also accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, and the council might recall that about this time last year, city staff brought forward an ordinance to streamline and make accessory dwelling units a form of housing in the community. This was in response to a state law. And so, the city hasn't seen a real avalanche, if you will, of accessory dwelling unit applications, but because of some laws that were passed three or four years ago, it has been much easier to build an ADU, and so we've projected that property owners will do that at a much accelerated, make much more accelerated pace than you've seen over the last couple of years. This is your I chart for the doctors in the room this evening to show all of the projects that count towards this arena, and these are also in the documents that were provided to you this evening, but we just wanted to have for the record something that shows projects that have been approved, projects that are in the pipeline, the fact that the city was still looking to satisfy about 1,400 units when you discount the things that are known. So, that, when we're looking and trying to identify sites that would be suitable for housing over the long run, we look at what's on the site today, we look at what the potential for that property to be recycled, and an example that I used earlier for the council would be properties that are zoned for multifamily housing, but do not support that today. There might just be a single-family home on that lot, and a property owner might see the untapped potential, if you will, to put more units on the lot, and so we look at that as a factor. We also look at the size of a site. There's actually what I like to call the Goldilocks site. The state has said it can't be smaller than half an acre, shouldn't be larger than 10 acres, so you've got kind of a nice wiggle room in there to find a site that would be suitable for housing. And then also, what might be the ultimate development yield on that site? The state allows that if a site, for a community the size of Loma Linda, if you allow at least 20 units per acre, that that can be considered amenable to affordable housing development. Not that it necessarily would be, but just based on economies of scale that affordable housing could be built on a site like that. This map also included in the housing element indicates that, in the pink, that there are a lot of vacant properties that could support housing over the long run. The areas that you see in that kind of golden beige-ish color, a lot of them are within the Groves' specific plans, so they're projects that are, will be coming before the council, the planning commission and the council in the near future. Something I do want to emphasize is that this is current zoning. Current land use policy can support the housing need. There is not a need to rezone properties to meet the housing demand that- that is anticipated over this planning period. And so, this chart also in your, the materials provided to you this evening shows in the end that, and this goes over two pages, that not only can the city demonstrate that there is enough vacant land and projects in the pipeline to satisfy the two thousand fifty-one, but there's a little bit of a buffer as well. And, and not through rezoning, but just because of the planning that you've done in the past, the city has capacity to support more housing than the state says is needed over this eight-year period. There are five overarching goals in the housing element. These are pretty much repeat from your last housing element that was done eight years ago. And I won't read through those, actually, they're six. There's this last about promoting sustainability as part of housing development as well, meaning using sustainable materials, making sure water is used wisely, et cetera. I mentioned affirmatively furthering fair housing. I wanted to stop on this for just a minute, because this is something that we had to put a lot more research into, and the state has really clamped down on this type of analysis. And so, what we did is we, we have a database of maps. You probably saw that there are about fourteen or fifteen colored maps in the, one of the appendices in the housing element that showed past, or actually, current patterns of lower-income housing in the community, how different people of ethnic groups are distributed among the community. And the goal is to make sure that when planning for housing, that lower-income housing is not being concentrated in areas that have a highest percentage of low-income housing or low, lower-income households today, or with high minority populations. And so, that was the type of analysis that we had to go through. This doesn't show up very well because of the lights, but this is just an example of concentrations of residents of Loma Linda by race and by income level. Those are two of the key factors that we look at when we're trying to ensure that the, that housing is distributed equally across the community. The housing element also defined-
Can I interrupt you real quick? Can you go back to those slides?
Sure.
So, I, and this is a comment that I make regularly, that I don't see a whole lot of differences. Like, I see, income's a little different if you go back to one more slide previous. Yeah. And I have a, well, maybe I'll wait till the comments section, but I like to tell people, this is a very unique community where there is no separate or segregated specific communities there. People live all over, and we have a lot of different ethnic backgrounds represented in this town, which is awesome. But you won't find a particular neighborhood that's got one particular group. And we, last year, we had the Indonesian consulate come out to visit us. And one of the things, this, I'm getting into the comment that I was going to make at the end, but one of the things they wanted to do is if we could identify, they, they said that we have one of the highest concentrations of Indonesians on the West Coast. And if we could identify a specific street that they could name, you know, like a little Indonesia, they wanted to be a part of that. And we could not find a concentration of any particular group in this city, because we are so blended here that everybody lives together. And that's something I am super proud of, and I think all Loma Linda residents should be proud of that. So, end of my-
No, actually, that's a great comment, Mr. Mayor, because in other communities that we have been working in, these maps are so different. And when I, when my staff put these together, I looked at them, I thought, wow, look at that. It's, you don't see this checkerboard pattern of different people of income ranges or races or anything that distinguishes it, it is indeed a blended community. I think that's a great way to describe it.
Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Sorry to interrupt.
And apropos that, in communities that do have these issues of segregation, the state is saying, what meaningful actions will you take to help reverse those patterns? In Loma Linda, it's not something that you're going to have to pay a lot of attention to, because it just happened that-
Organically.
Very good, thank you. That's a great word to use. And so, the element really addresses just making, being inclusive in government decision-making and inviting people to be part of the civic community. And that seems to be most of the, the effort. And then, one key thing that I like to point out, this is the third bullet from the bottom there, is sometimes landlords are not fully aware of the laws that address housing discrimination. It's important to make sure that they know what the rules are. Couple of other new housing programs in addition to these about affirmatively furthering fair housing. In our study session, we talked a little bit about that second bullet point, about a tracking program to make sure that the city maintains an inventory of land where lower-income housing could be built. So, if something had been shown on the map as for lower-income housing, but it gets built at market rate housing, there still needs to be a backup supply, if you will. So, that, that's in response to state law, and that's, I just wanted to highlight that no net loss program and also promoting accessory dwelling unit production, provided that they comply with all of the laws that you have on the books for ADUs. And that's just a couple of other ones that we won't go through. A lot of these are in response to the many housing laws that continue to be generated. The, this question, second from the bottom there, of a low-barrier navigation center. That's for people who are coming out of homelessness and looking to transition to permanent housing. The city needs to make sure that the zoning code allows for something called a low-barrier navigation center, where people can easily transition and find the resources that they need. With that, city staff is asking that the council adopt the SEQA document associated with this project, an addendum to the EIR from two thousand six, I think it was, and then also adopt a resolution approving the housing element. And Lorena will be asking to get a resolution signed this week, if the council acts tonight, so that we can get something up to the state to show indeed the city has met the deadline. Mr. Mayor, if you'd like me to stay for questions here, I'm happy to do so.
I'm confident we will have some, so, if you wouldn't mind.
Is it okay if I ask questions out of here? Do you have a copy?
I do.
Great.
Are you looking, I don't, I've got a red-lined copy, so if you've mentioned a page number, I might have to jump around a little bit to find it.
Okay. First one is E six.
Okay.
All right. Question from that page was, I just wanted to make sure I understood the discrepancy between income levels. So, overall, compared to San Bernardino County, our median household income is twelve thousand dollars less, about twenty percent less. Is that, would you say that primarily due to students? I see in the paragraph, we mentioned that it may reflect a higher student population. But is that the whole cause of why Loma Linda has a lower median income rate?
Um, I don't know the answer to that without doing a lot of deep, deep digging. That's just information that we get from the census. Yeah, and Jarb, the city manager, is saying likely due to the fact that you do have a fairly high student population.
And that's why we have a higher poverty rate as well?
Well, are those students counted in the census?
No.
So, I'm not sure about that.
Is, is, again, because we not involved with the, I think it was twenty twenty census that we, it was a twenty ten.
Uh, it was actually, it's pulled from something called the American Community Survey, so it's kind of a mid-time census.
So, really, I don't know the answer, but, but because he just pulled it from, from the California census numbers. So, I don't know how to calculate. More likely to just look at everybody income divided by the number of population, they come up with the average, so.
Second question was on E twenty-one.
Okay.
So, this is both E twenty-one and then the figure E ten, which is, I think, on page, E twenty-five? Yep. All right. So, for this one, it mentions two different tracts, which have a really high CAL ENVIRO screen score. The two tracts, in the middle of those two tracts, we have one tract which has a really low score. Now, I understand that that tract has just higher incomes, but what is it that makes that tract more safe, cleaner, et cetera, compared to the other two?
The CAL ENVIRO screen, the way to interpret it is if, a high score is bad. It means you have higher exposure and just other things. And so, the, the high scores are associated with census tracts near the freeway. So, it's largely having to do with the noise and the pollutant emissions from the freeway from both, well, largely from I ten.
So, why is a tract that's farther away from the freeway, so south towards the hills, why is that worse off than something that's right in the middle and about two to three blocks away from the freeway?
It could be, and I have to go back and look at the data that contributed to that. I don't think that you've got industrial uses there, but there may have been from remnant ag operations from the past, pesticides, dust from ag operations.
From the hills onward?
Pardon?
From the hills downward?
Toward, towards the freeway. I'm, I'm looking at, on page E twenty-five, it's showing that the worst conditions are near the freeway. And then, you have, actually, kind of right in the middle of town, that green area is better than the hillside area.
Yeah. So, that's the confusing part, right? Like, it's closer to the freeway, but it's better than something that's right down the hills.
I would have to dig into the data on that, I can't tell you off the top of my head.
Thank you.
I, I think the plus side to all of this is I've seen a lot worse maps than this, and similar to the, the maps that the mayor mentioned, this shows that Loma Linda is in pretty darn good shape.
Okay. Any more questions?
I don't have any specific questions, because we had a robust discussion for an hour before we came in here about this. I appreciate that, thank you.
And thank you for your earlier comments, questions.
Okay. No other questions from the council? Open up the public comments. Saying no one run forward for this one, we'll close the public comment, and I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution to amend the general plan for twenty-one, twenty-two nine, and adopt the addendum number three to the city of Loma Linda General Plan Environmental Impact Report, and approve the amendment to the Loma Linda General Plan for the twenty-two one, twenty-two nine housing element update.
He was reading number three.
I wrote number three. Wrong, four? Okay. Change that from O five to O four. So, instead of twenty-two two dash O five, twenty-two two dash O-
No, it's O five. You're right.
Okay.
You're a hundred percent right. But I thought you were looking at the attorney to make sure we read it in the correct legal terms. Okay, we have a motion? A motion and a second by Dr. Lenart. Madam Clerk?
The motion is, the motion is to adopt Council Bill R dash twenty-two two zero five, adopt the, adopt addendum number three to the City of Loma Linda General Plan Final Environmental Impact Report, and adopt a resolution approving the amendment to the Loma Linda General Plan for the twenty-two one to twenty-two nine housing element update. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Lenart? Mayor Protem Daily?
Hi.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
The project is approved.
Thank you very much. And thank you very much to staff and to our consultant for working so hard on this. There's a lot of time and effort put into this. Okay, moving on to the second part, which is Council Bill R dash two zero two two dash zero four, adopting a resolution to amend the general plan. And this has to do with our safety element.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, my name is Aaron Fanensteele. Do you want to turn the presentation on? Thank you. Yes, so tonight, we'll talk about your general plan safety element. Another element that, let me see if I can get this to work correctly. Okay. That we are bringing forward tonight, and it's partly in due to the housing element, actually. And so, we'll explain a little about that later. This is actually a two-part project that we embarked on with the city, working closely with Jarb, Lorena, and Tom in the Fire Department, part of the project. And there is a resolution before you on the consent calendar for the adoption of the local hazard mitigation plan. These two documents work together. One, the local hazard mitigation plan is federally regulated, so it has to comply with the Code of Federal Regulations. The safety element is governed by the California Government Code. And so, we'll focus on that tonight. And, you know, to kind of explain why these documents are related to each other, I like to show this graphic. And think of it from the standpoint that when we talk about hazards and emergency management within a community, there are different tools in our toolbox. The safety element is the tool that you're going to use to take the longest view towards your community and the hazards you're concerned about. The hazard mitigation plan is really a focused strategic plan that helps you understand over the next five years, what do you want to achieve to address some of the concerns within your community? And then, what we often hear about when something bad happens in your community is what are you doing to manage the emergency? And that's where your emergency operations plan comes into play. And so, tonight, again, we'll focus on the safety element. But obviously, if you have any questions about the hazard mitigation plan or anything else, I'd be happy to answer those. So, what is governed in your safety element? What is it that you have to address? The California Government Code, Section six five three oh two G one, identifies the primary hazards that you need to address within your community. Now, if the hazard does not exist in your community, then you're not required to address it, of course. But we have identified here the hazards that your element complies with and addresses. And the reason that we are here tonight is, one, as I mentioned, your housing element triggered the requirement that you needed to update the safety element as well. This has not always been the case. It wasn't until twenty eighteen, when the legislature got wise, and they realized we are asking communities to address their housing every couple of years. At, now, at the time, it's eight years, whereas in the past, it's shifted around between four, five, six years. And why are we not doing the same with some other elements? So, as Laura had indicated before, the housing element is required to be updated on a regular basis. Now, with the adoption of Senate Bill ten thirty-five, your safety element is also required to be updated at the time that you update your housing element. In addition to that, over the last few years, the legislature has also identified a number of additional items that the safety element needs to address. There's a much larger component to addressing wildfires, which in Loma Linda, you have wildfire conditions that require review by CAL FIRE and approval by the Board of Forestry and Fire Protection. And this safety element has been reviewed both by CAL FIRE staff and approved by the Board of Forestry and Fire Protection. And we'll share with you a little bit about what was said on that. But for the most part, they were very pleased with the element and praised staff's collaboration and coordination during the process. And then, two other components that are fairly new. One is SB ninety-nine, this is addressing evacuation concerns. And what the legislature was very concerned about was any areas where you have single ingress egress condition. So, one neighborhood where you only have one access point in and out. We did identify just one location within the city where you have this concern, and then identified a number of goals and policies to help address that, that key area. And then, finally, climate adaptation is a very large concern. Senate Bill three seventy-nine was adopted a few years ago. And this is where the hazard mitigation plan and the safety element work together hand in hand. With the legislature identifying climate adaptation, they allowed cities to rely on this, the local hazard mitigation plan as long as it addressed climate change within it. And so, your plan today has both of those documents integrated, so that we're making sure you're complying with that requirement. As I had indicated before, the emergency evacuation routes, here's the location that we identified throughout the entire city. This is the only location that met the criteria. The criteria is typically thirty parcels or residential lots that have a single ingress egress location. And so, now that you know this, this allows all of your emergency responders, first responders, to be able to understand where are the potential locations within the community where you may be challenged from an evacuation standpoint, and be able to better plan around that. Fire hazard severity zone, so, again, the reason that you have to comply with the CAL FIRE threshold here is because you have what's known as a very high fire hazard severity zone. This is a zone that has been delineated by CAL FIRE. There's about a hundred and fifty or so jurisdictions- There's about a hundred and fifty or so jurisdictions, local jurisdictions, and about fifty-six out of fifty-eight counties that have these conditions that require CAL FIRE review. So not every jurisdiction in the state has to conduct this type of review and approval.
Can I ask a question about that slide?
Yes, sir.
So it obviously makes sense about the stuff that's up along the, the hills. So the yellow, is that, is that like a, a traveling distance for embers or what, what designates that, that color?
It's considered moderate risk, so it doesn't have the same conditions as a very high. Most of the criteria is based on topography, fire history, vegetation types and and, and essentially the reason that it's in that moderate risk is because it only has a couple of those, not all of those indicators. Or it's because it's in close enough proximity to a very high fire hazard severity zone, like ember casks can happen. And, and so that's one of the reasons why they're identifying it. But there's no regulatory requirement behind it being in a moderate risk zone versus a very high. Only in the very high does it move up the threshold as far as what you have to do from a regulatory standpoint. And then climate resiliency, so again, we're, we're relying heavily on the hazard mitigation plan. And there's a series of goals and policies within the element to really help address how you want to tackle any particular issues when it comes to climate and climate adaptation within the community. So tonight, the recommended action again is to adopt the initial study negative declaration and then the resolution for the general plan safety element update. And with that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
I can't help but think that Shannon would have been involved in this, right?
I've worked with Shannon, worked with him for a number of years, yes, so.
Okay, I don't see any questions.
No, it's a good report. It's very thorough.
We'll go ahead and open the public comment. Seeing no one race forward for this one either. Close that and entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution to amend the general plan for the twenty-two-one fifty element update. And the initial study, negative declaration pursuant to sequel guidelines and approve the amendment to the Loma Linda general plan for the twenty-two-one safety element update.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Madam Clerk.
The motion is to adopt council bill R dash twenty-two-two zero four. Adopting the resolution to amend the general plan for the twenty-two-one safety element. That includes adopting the initial study, negative declaration pursuant to sequel guidelines and to adopt a resolution approving the amendment to the Loma Linda general plan for the twenty-two-one safety element update. Councilman Jindal?
Affirmative.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Daily?
Hi.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
The project was approved.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number five, public hearing for our, our fall weed abatement. Here we are. It just seems like we were just doing the spring last time. Yeah.
Good evening, council and city staff. I bear good news this time. Here to talk about the fall twenty-two-one weed abatement program that began on September twenty-seventh with our fire inspector Matt Dingman. He went out and inspected four hundred and thirty-five parcels. Gave notice to clean property on October seventh, twenty-twenty-one. To the owners of record, we had four letters returned to sender. Once we get those letters back, we post the notices on the actual properties and take a photo for documentation purposes. Matt went out and did a re-inspection between November eighth and the ninth. If those parcels had not been abated at that time or an arrangement was made with Matt to, for an extension, we sent our city contractor out to go and abate those properties. As you can see, because of Matt's due diligence and working with property owners and, you know, taking the extra time to go out there and work with the public, we only have one property that has not paid and I think that's a record, so. All the credit goes to Matt and his time and his hard work to, to get to where we're at these days, so. Very, very lucky to have Matt on my staff and so the recommendation is to council to receive the report of the fall twenty-two-one weed abatement program, approve the report and accounting of costs and adopt the accompanying resolution establishing liens and assessments on the properties. Any questions?
I agree with you. In my years on the council, this is a record.
Yep.
Good job.
Yep.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public comment. Close the public comment and we'll entertain a motion on this report.
I move council bill R twenty-two-two dash seven. Do I need to read the whole thing? Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, we have first and a second. Madam Clerk.
The motion is to adopt council bill R dash twenty-two-two dash zero-seven to receive the report of the fall twenty-two-one weed abatement program. Approve the report and, and accounting of costs and adopt the accompanying resolution establishing liens and assessments on the properties. Councilman Jindal? Councilman Leonard?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Daily? Mayor Duper?
Yes.
The project is approved.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the consent calendar. I would actually like to just ask a question if I could.
I've got a couple too.
Okay. Mine is number fifteen A. And what are yours?
Yeah, I had, I'll, we'll listen to your fifteen A because I had one as well. I had a question about C and D and sixteen B. Okay.
You guys have any over here? Okay. Mr. City Manager, fifteen A. So what exactly is the fencing for at the library?
Yes, so the fencing by the library is, if you notice, the library, we have a, on the north side of the library, we have a ramp that go down to the door.
Okay.
Well, a lot of homeowners have been sleeping and, and dropping.
Droppings. Dropping, droppings, yes.
And, and, and so what we're doing is we request that we install the rock eye fence.
Okay.
And the gate so that people can have a-
That, that was part two of my question is what kind of fencing? I was worried we were- To match what it looks like over here. Okay. All right. And then C and D.
Okay, C?
I just, yeah, C, that was the same question I had on A. C, I just, I'm curious, where is Mountain View well number five?
Yes, it's in the city San Bernardino on Cooline Avenue.
Does that have anything to do with why it's not as pure as the other wells?
No, no, what, what happened is, is, is the well is way deep, one thousand five hundred and twenty feet deep.
Yeah.
And, and the lower aquifer have contamination, have arsenic. So what we like to do is we like to move the, the screen. So instead of screen being down here, we would like to move it up higher to a different aquifer to get cleaner water. To be able to do that, to locate where, where the good water is, we have to hire tech, tech to do that service to locate where the good water is.
And I don't object to it, obviously. I'm just trying to understand it. So the other city wells that we have that are providing pure water, they're-
They're level tighter.
Okay, okay.
The problem is if it's too high, they have high nitrate. If it's too low, they have arsenic. And so we have to find somewhere in the middle and then if it's too much for one thing, it's good on the other well, you have to blend it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
And the gentleman who helped us with all this water, he's sitting right here. I tested the water, I heard, yeah.
So all those wells basically nitrate, chlorate and arsenic. That's why those wells have to be blended.
Yeah, and I understood that from the staff report. I just didn't understand why we had one well that was an outlier. Now I understand. Fifteen D.
Yes.
I, I like the art that's proposed and I appreciate the explanation of how it's all going to be fabricated and so forth. My only question is, is it graffiti resistant?
Well, what's nice about Cal is, is if somebody graffiti it, the fallen neighbors can come and go out and move.
So that'll be put on the route for whoever has a cleaner?
We do that every morning, sir.
Oh, do you? Oh, good. And the last question I had was on sixteen B, remodel of the fire station two fifty-one.
Completed.
Completed.
Yes. The fire was completed.
So I'm listening, I'm looking for a cheer or something from the fire department. Yeah.
I already moved in. They, they seem to be happy, so I'm, I'm ready to move on to the next one.
So all, all your employees are happy and content and?
Very happy. They did a very good job.
If I had a theater at my house that you guys have here, I'm not sure I would leave my house. But in this case, I'm, I would think people are volunteering for extra duty because it's a nice facility. Okay, I'm done.
For fifteen D, it's eighteen thousand dollars, right?
Yes.
Are we planning on doing more of these around the city?
We have been doing different artwork around the city, yes.
Well, we haven't done ceramic, right? I know we've done like the birds and, yeah. Are we planning on doing more ceramic around the city?
If it work out good, it should give me a good deal, yes.
Cool. Have we opened this kind of stuff to like local artists?
Yes.
Like different types?
On Martin Road, on, on Venice Boulevard, through the whole party. Two kids go to the avenue, it's like a, a significant area.
Yeah, so what I'm thinking is, so this is great, right? Ceramic. We have the ones that are already installed, like maybe pottery in the future or you mentioned graffiti, then I think we can turn that into art as well. So-
No.
Maybe even some kind of graffiti art place that looks nice.
No. Sorry.
There's some creative people out there.
Yeah, that's inviting, I think, more challenge. Well, that's just my-
But I'm, I'm just saying like diversifying the type of art because I really like these around the city. It adds a little more flavor. So I appreciate all the effort that's being done towards this.
And, and you saw two donkeys on the, on the south side of the line. There was, there was a whore all loving, right? They, they came over and hang around here.
The art?
Yes.
Because they couldn't tell it wasn't real? Think we're going to get a report on that later, right? There's been no burrows lately. We're good. Okay, so anyway, we, I think we got all the answers. We did already have a motion, right? And a, give me a second. I don't, I don't remember if we had one. We did? Did we have a second? Yeah, I didn't hear one either.
I didn't hear if we had a second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Motion is to approve the, all the items on the consent calendar as presented. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Daily?
Hi.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
The consent calendar was approved.
Thank you very much. Moving on to old business and this ought to be some more lengthy discussion.
And Councilman Leonard will love this one. Well, at the, at the last city council meeting, Councilman Jindal asked how come we don't have the quorum at the many historical commission meetings? So, and the answer is, if you look at the list on the second page, is we have two members that moved out of town and one member that passes away. So that's why a lot of time we don't have the quorum for the meeting. So what I would like to recommend is, is just reduce the number of the commissioned from eleven to eight, which pretty much reduced by three. And then if you're okay with that, then because he's the commissioner, I have to bring it back for first reading and second reading and so forth. So that's my-
Is an even number a good number or could that potentially cause some ties? Should we fire somebody and make it seven?
Well, I think some people are going to quit. One person has at, at least confidentially said that they're planning on, so I think it'll-
It's going to solve, correct?
Solve itself.
Yeah.
I still think we need some kind of long-term solution because this is going to keep happening.
Well, they, they-
So I don't know what the answer is, but like-
Eleven is a lot of people though. It's hard to get much consensus from that size of a committee.
I, I really feel like we did what we typically do here and that's that we try to make everybody happy. And so there were abundance of people that wanted to be on the commission and so I think we just, to try to solve it, we, we added people. And so that's, that's probably part of our fault because we always try to please people, so.
So if you like my recommendation, I can bring it back and, and reduce the numbers.
I support it.
Do you think that this will correct it?
Wait, say that again?
Do we think that this will correct the problem? It's going to change, it's going to lower the number for quorum, but we still have enough people showing up?
If you look at the attendees, the, the one that's continued to come to the meeting, they have been showing up for the meeting, so I think they will continue to come.
Okay.
So, so that will make a quorum.
All right, what, what's the, what's the will? What's the pleasure? You guys agree with this or no?
I would.
I'll go with it.
I'll go with whatever keeps it from coming back here.
Well, it's going to have to come back, so we have to do that. Because we have to do the resolution.
Yes, because it's a resolution, so I, I would just bring it first.
Can you put it in the consent calendar?
For resolution, so.
Can it go in the consent calendar?
I'd be happy to.
Oh, there you go. We had the discussion.
So I'm going to reiterate, like, it doesn't have to be this year, but maybe next year. We look at, looking all our commissions and seeing how we want to reformat them. Because I am worried about this one and then there might be other commissions that fall in the same step.
The only two that commission is, is a planning commission and historical. I don't know why this is a commission instead of just committees, like park and trail.
Well, should we change it to a committee?
Huh?
Should we change it to a committee?
What's the distinction?
Lorena was just mentioning there's, might be something in our code on it, so we probably need to look, look at that and get back to you on that.
Okay.
My, my, and I said it last meeting and I know it's going to, it may irritate some people, but not here, not on the dais. No, no, no. Is, is the one thing I am concerned with the historical commission is the one commission that does not require they be a resident of the city. Correct. And so we've had, and I think they're great people, but we've had a few very vocal folks join the commission in the last couple of years. So we have to temper that with what's best for the residents in town too. So I just want us to be thinking about that in the makeup of that commission.
Random question, why does one of these say Bryn Mawr instead of Loma Linda?
No, it used to be the old, the old way it was referred to when it was counting. And he's, he's very, he's, they call him the mayor of Bryn Mawr.
So if you're okay, I will bring it back to reduce the-
Whatever you want to do.
Okay, I will. Number twenty-one, read.
Okay. So we didn't need to, okay, we're good. Moving on to item number twenty-one. This is where a city manager wants to give her way or money again.
No, 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 pay down our debt.
It's a great way to phrase it.
So at the last, at the last city council meeting, we presented audit for the last fiscal year. As you recall, we end the year with two-point-five million dollars of surplus in the general fund. So what I would like to do is, is, is spend a hundred thousand dollars of general fund to, to pay down unfunded liability.
A million or a hundred thousand?
A million, I'm sorry. A million dollars. And then eighty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars of the sewer fund and two-hundred-eleven thousand, six hundred of the water fund. Total one-point-three million dollars to bring down our purse unfunded liability. A, a little background is I want to point out that we used to owe more than, almost over sixteen million dollars.
Yeah.
Of which back in twenty-nineteen, we paid out eight-point-five million. And twenty-twenty, we paid out another two million. And last year, we paid out one-point-three. So I would like to pay down for, for this fiscal year another one-point-three. So we should have about, about six, about six million dollar in front balance. And again, because the interest rate is about seven and a quarter percent, which currently we owe about- And again, because the interest rate is about seven and a quarter percent, with, which currently we owe about seven million, the interest is about half a million dollars a year. So if we can bring it down, we lower our interest and, and we can use that for other things.
Yeah, I don't know if this is good, or if it puts us on the radar in a bad way, but, uh, I had some representatives of the governor's office reach out to me recently and, and wanted to talk about what our needs were and as a city and where we stand. And I was bragging to them about the thing I said earlier about Indonesia, and I also bragged to them about this. And, um, they, they commented that this is pretty rare in the state for any, any cities to be paying down their unfunded liability like we are, so. Um, it's definitely, uh, something to be proud of, but I don't know if that means they'll just levy more money against us, I don't know. No, I agree that, that, from what I understand and some of the other council members I know from other cities, you know, they're struggling with a lot heavier debt than we are. But I mean, you just look at bookkeeping one-on-one, and this is a smart thing to do, so I'm, I'm strongly supportive of it. If we can, as long as we can afford it, and we, you and I talked about that already, so. Okay. Uh, item number two.
Hold on, are you, are you approved?
Oh, do we need a motion to approve that?
I move to appropriate funding and authorize an additional payment to Cal Purse for the city of Loma Linda unfunded pension obligation. Do I need to go into the amount?
Okay.
First, and looking for a second, and we have a second. Uh, one other comment I, I wanna make about this, and it's, and it's important, and I know our, our employees know this, but it's good for our residents to know this also. This, a lot of this stuff protects the employees in the long run, and I go back to what happened in the city of San Bernardino a few years ago when they declared bankruptcy, they actually stopped paying their purse obligation. As a result, the, the state threatened, or whoever controls purse, threatened to remove payments to retirees. And so, it's important to note that when you retire, even if, you know, you've worked at a couple of different agencies and you've, you've been around, um, they all, those cities have a share in your retirement, are responsible for your retirement. And so working for a city that is financially stable is, is a very big thing, it's a big deal, especially when you're getting close to retire. I felt sorry for a lot of those retirees in San Bernardino, some of them had been out five, six, seven, ten years, and then all of a sudden they were talking about cutting their, their pension benefits. So, um, this really is a big deal, and it's good for our employees in the long run. Anyway, that's it, um, Madam Clerk.
The motion is to approve an appropriation and authorize the expenditure of one point three million from general fund. Expenditure of one point three million from general fund, which is a million, sewer fund eighty-eight thousand four hundred, and from the water fund two hundred eleven thousand six hundred for an additional payment to Cal Purse to pay down the city's unfunded pension obligation. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard? Mayor Protem Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
This item was approved.
Thank you very much, item number twenty-two.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, if you look at the, uh, there's a map in the back, a little history is back in nineteen ninety-five, the city purchased the property for the Hodor Crooks Park. Uh, which is include the house on Allen Way, uh, uh, which called Allen Break Estate. And, and in, back in two thousand ten, we declare the, the surplus property and we sold the property. But we still retain approximately one point five acres parcel to the west of that part, of that house. And the reason it be, it's vacant is because they have a fault line, uh, right in the middle of, of that parcel, and it's also have a slope, this pretty, pretty steep slope on the side. So, the new, the new owner of that house came to the city and would like to purchase that, that parcel so that he can plant more orange trees. So we, we had the property appraised, and it's appraised with, with, uh, we let them know that it's a fault line and a slope and so forth. It's appraised at twenty-one thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars. And so, the city, I would like to request that the city declare, uh, this property become a, uh, uh, surplus property. And then I will come back and, and for your approval to sell this property to, to the, the property next door.
I'm in, I'm in, obviously in favor of this, I, um, it's not that big of a deal, but, um, just to bring up a little bit of history, the, the Allen, Allen Break, right?
Yes, Allen Break, yeah.
Um, I believe we sold that house for a couple hundred thousand dollars. If, if you remember, and it was just resold to the new owners for over a million dollars.
But he did a lot of improvement.
He did a lot of improvements, yes, he did. But it also shows you where real estate's come, cause I wanna say that was one of the first things, when did we sell that?
Two thousand ten.
Yeah, that was one of the first things I experienced as a council member coming on brand new, so, but, uh, yeah. Over a million dollars on that house.
Which house is that, is that the one on the top of the hill?
It's, it's right, it's, it's below the park, you can see it from the park when you're at the park.
The one with the filler panels?
I'm, I'm not sure of it, those little panels, I haven't paid attention to that.
So if you, if you go up Allen Way, you know where Allen Way is?
Yeah.
The last house to the left before you, before the Carter sack, that's the one.
Got it, over the left.
When you're, when you're at the top of the park and Hodor Crooks Park and you look down to the left, it's the one that looks like it's kind of on the park, on the park property a little bit, but it's not stone house, but he did some additions to it.
And they have some like gardens in front, right?
Yes, and orange trees.
So they wanna extend basically their property through orange trees to the.
West of the house.
Do you have general consensus?
Any negatives or cons for doing this?
No, I, I, I'm glad they're doing it because there's a lot of date, um, eucalyptus trees that I need to go over there and cut it, so if he purchases it, he have to go maintain the lot.
We couldn't put a well there or anything like that if we needed to, cause of the. I think, I think you have that consensus, so.
Do you have to use?
Do we need to do a roll call vote on it?
Yes, I'll do a roll call.
So, so this is, I will come back on the next city council meeting to, to have a public hearing to sell the, the property.
Okay.
Super.
Do we need to do a roll call vote?
I think it's a good idea since you're declaring it surplus property.
Okay.
So it's the consensus of council to set a public hearing for March eighth, twenty twenty-two to approve a council bill to declare surplus property and authorize disposal. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard? Mayor Protem Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Okay, this was approved.
Okay, moving on to reports of council members. Seeing none, moving to reports, oh, oh.
Just one quick comment, um, so even though we don't have any representation on any water body anymore, cause they dissolved, um, that forum. There is an Upper Santa Anno River Water Forum happening on sixteenth from eleven thirty AM to one PM. It's happening at the Ukaipa Valley Water District, um, the Crystal Creek Treatment Plant. I think it's pretty good opportunity if any of the other council members wanna go attend, I'm gonna definitely go here. Been trying to get a tour of this place since like ninth grade, I think, so, um, finally an opportunity for me.
Dream come true.
Yeah, um, but whoa, wait for us to be involved in the water conversation even if we don't have an official, uh, presence?
I, I, I attend a meeting pretty much every month, via Zoom, and then we also have, uh, Milford here on the board.
That's, yeah, absolutely, I was gonna say, that's probably one of our most valuable assets.
Thank you, Milford Harrison for the record. Yes, I am a member of the board of the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District, and this, uh, function next Wednesday is being put on by the water district. Along with the city of Ukaipa and the city, uh, the, uh, Ukaipa Valley Water District. This is an opportunity for the, for our water district, which is the umbrella water district over this whole valley. And we're responsible for making sure that there's water for your children and your grandchildren and your great-grandch, et cetera. That's our responsibility, Loma Linda's responsibility is to make sure that when you turn on the faucet, it's there. We, this is in place of the advisory council. All of the city council members for the city of Ukaipa and all of the city council members and mayor for the whole valley are invited to this. It is next Wednesday, and, um, we're also inviting water district personnel, et cetera. And it's going to be an opportunity for, for those jurisdictions to talk about what they have in mind for, for valley district to talk about the, the things that we're doing. And then, uh, and that's basically the fifth, fifth, um, division of, of, uh, valley district. The next one is April twenty-seven, and that's the fourth district, and that's my district, so I'll be the host that day. And we're hoping that your mayor and your city manager will, will be there to be able to present what Loma Linda's doing and any other suggestions that you might have, and I will be sending a formal letter to you, uh, soon. But, uh, if you could put that down for, save the date, April twenty-seven. And, uh, we haven't decided where we're gonna hold it yet, we're looking at, Grand Terrace, Loma Linda, and Redlands are in my district. So we're looking at appropriate, uh, location, we are actually talking with the SRI, it may be there. If, uh, if they open up that function for us, so. But, uh, we're gonna do this for the entire valley, the entire watershed, and we're gonna try to include, we're going to include every city and, uh, and all of the water districts, et cetera, and, uh, those type of official, officials that were invited to the advisory council, uh, prior. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, reports of officers.
Yes, I have one.
Does this have to do with donkeys?
Have to do with donkeys, uh, I'm happy to report that the donkey moved back to the hill, to the south hill all by himself. I mentioned that last, three weeks ago, I hike up the hill, and also last Friday, I hike up the hill, and I didn't see any donkey in our part. I saw donkeys in, toward Richard Canyon and behind the dump, so, so. But in the meantime, we did have an agreement, not agreement, understanding with Donkeyland's, uh, sanctuary, which is located on the, uh, west, the west end of Richard Canyon, past Richard Vista, they own two thousand acre that they let the donkey walk around. And, and so we have agreement with them that if we see our, any donkey in town, we can work with them to come and, and pick them up and take it to their, um, in their sanctuary. And we will pay for the hay, which is food, and, and, uh, we'll pay for neuter, the, the male donkeys, and then after it done, then we let it go.
And we're confident they're not gonna take your art, that apparently was mistaken.
They love those. So, just one thing, please, if you see the donkey, do not feed them, so when you feed the donkey, they will come back, so just let them be, so.
Okay, all right, um.
Oh, yes, we, we have been approved and being now a member of a tree city USA. And since you mentioned about regarding the school district boundary, we received an email from the school district that they will have a public hearing, they have not set the date yet. So as soon as they set the date, I will, I will forward to you and, and you can attend the, uh, their, their public hearing.
That, so, that, oh, sorry, to belabor this, but the public hearing, would that be something that the residents would wanna attend?
They should, I mean.
So should we proactively notify the residents of that?
I don't know who's the one who pushed for this, you, you, you know, and, and there's, again, I'm, I'm not their attorney, so there's a lot of implication. Just because you move out of their school district, your obligation to pay the debt is still there, you can't just move away from your debt.
Right, and I don't, I don't see this as an issue we should get involved in, the only, the only caveat is that I think maybe we should help notify people, because we're the ones that they approached to help get them to this point. And we notify people that that's, that's the public hearing that they need to attend.
You know what, let, let me, let me follow up with the school district, they should be the one who, who send out the notices, so.
As long as somebody does, because I.
I will, I will follow up, yes.
I, I think that, I think the message we heard was those residents wanna voice, and we told them, we're not the body that can help you. So, but I think we have a responsibility to share with them that that is the body they can appear in front of, does that make sense? So however that's done, but even if, even if it costs us a little bit of money to send out notices, I just think, you know, again, they can go to that, that hearing, because then at the end of the day, whatever happens is between them and that school district. Just my thought. Okay, uh, we are done with our city council agenda, and we're gonna open up the housing authority. Do we have any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, anybody wishing to speak on any non-agendized item, and please run forward, not seeing anybody there, uh, we will move on to the consent calendar, do we have a motion? Do we have a motion, and? Do we have a second?
So, we have number three, that's new, anything major that we need to highlight from that?
Oh, this is, this is a report that we have to do every year, because when, when the, when the state took away our RDA, uh, the city is still responsible for the housing authority. And so we have to do a report to them every year, what we do with their, the money, we said about two hundred thousand dollar worth, so.
That money's slowly dwindling down, right?
Right, it, it's to pay down the debt, pretty much, yes.
Okay, we have first and a second, Madam Clerk.
The motion is to approve the consent calendar on the housing authority agenda. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Consent calendar is approved.
Thank you very much, we have a new business, chair member reports, reports of officers, seeing none, we'll adjourn, and we'll open up the successor agency to the redevelopment agency. Uh, do we have any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Anybody wanting to speak on this, run forward, seeing nobody coming forward, we'll move on to the consent calendar here. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, Madam Clerk.
Motion is to approve the successor agency consent calendar. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard? Mayor Protem Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
I like it.
The consent calendar for the successor agency is approved.
Thank you very much, and, uh, that will adjourn all of our meetings, thank you for coming.